Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, evergreen, just as we call it.
All right. Uh, first things first, approval of the agenda. We need to, uh, remove, uh, policy F eight. Um, this was, uh, uh, sent back by the GRCSU board, uh, to the policy committee. And, um, and then, uh, is anyone objecting to, uh, moving the consolidation timeline discussion to December? Uh, I know there's a few people who aren't going to be here tonight. And I think it would be best to continue that with everyone. All right, all right. So, uh, with those two amendments, uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
All right, a motion by Amanda. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion to adjourn. Uh, general public, we have none. And then we're right off into finance.
All right, we're jumping right into it tonight.
Yeah.
Do it while our brains are fresh.
So the budget was in the packet, uh, for the last few days. Um, in the packet also was a sheet regarding health insurance increases. Think, uh, most of you were on the call last night or in person. I think Matt, you may be the only one. So, um, so this is, a lot of this will be repetitive, but, so I just wanted to highlight how much of an impact health insurance increases are having on our budgets. Uh, so originally we were hoping for, well, we were hoping for a single digit increases in health insurance. Uh, I was estimating 10% in my first round for the SU. Uh, we found out last week that health insurance increases are going to be at 16.4%. Uh, it's the highest that they've been in the last five years. Um, but that sheet does highlight where, where we've been over the last five years. And we've seen four years with double digit increases in the last five years. Um, totaling 57.2%. Um, and when you compound that year over year, we're looking at a 71% increase in rates. Um, so the, the family plan has gone from 17,000 to 29,000 and that's just our portion. Uh, so that's 80% of the cost, uh, 100% of the cost is now almost $36,000 for a family plan. So it's getting to be pretty significant. Um, this year alone, the increases SU wide, uh, just in health insurance are approximately $679,000. Uh, and when you talk about putting that in perspective, I mean, you look at staffing and that's anywhere. I mean, that could be 10 staff members. Um, so it, it does have a, a significant impact. Um, there's another piece to this, which isn't even on here, and that's we're also paying HRA expenses. Uh, and that's another, it ranges from another 2,000 to $4,400 per employee that's on our plans. Uh, and, um, those are all in our budget and it just, these increases are really unsustainable. So hopefully, uh, V S B A, along with VSA and Vasbo, uh, are looking at what, what steps they could take to mitigate this for the future. Uh, whether it be changing in the structure of our plans or negotiating the different plans. Um, so that we can sort of at least slow down the rate of increase over, over the next few years. Um, one of the major drivers that they have set is, is pharmaceuticals. Um, and that's just with all the, the brand name pharmacies or, uh, medicines on the market. And they're constantly being advertised on TV and that is really driving our prices up. Uh, we're talking about some of these are several thousand dollars per month. Matt?
Hey, thanks. So the, you mentioned, was it HSA? I wasn't just, I wasn't familiar with that acronym.
Well, we offer both HRAs and HRAs. HRAs is a health reimbursement account.
Oh, okay.
So the way that works is if someone has a, a healthcare expense, uh, we pay up to, if they have a family plan, we pay up to the first $4,000 if it's a teacher and 4,400 if it's a non-teacher. So if they, they go to the doctors and the insurance covers, it's a thousand dollar bill and insurance covers 500, the next $500 will come out of their HRA. Um, and so most of our plans have a deductible. And so first we have to meet the deductible. And so the insurance isn't kicking in anything at first. And so the, the first dollar is coming out of that HRA. The HSA is a health savings account and that works a little bit differently where we pay all the money upfront. And we give that to the employee and they put it into their HSA account and then they put, pay bills as, as, as they arise.
Uh, but we, Yeah. Is that not funded by the, and by the staff? It's, it's funded by us?
It's funded by the district.
By the district, got it.
Yep.
Cool. That's a nice benefit.
Oh, it's a great benefit, yep. Uh, any other questions about health insurance before we move on to the actual budget?
I think you covered it. I think you said that it's sort of, uh, it gets dictated to us, the, the plan. And like, we don't really have, like, we would, uh, negotiate with like, for example, Betia. We, we're not negotiating, that's, it's not, we're not negotiating on what provider we're using or for insurance, uh, at the district level. It's more of like a state.
It's a state. Yeah. So the health insurance used to be a, a local negotiated item. Uh, we didn't really have any control over the actual plans and the structure of the plans, but we had control over what percentage of the plan we paid. Um, about, I'd, I'd say about five years ago, six years ago, the state took it over. It was part of the legislation where they wanted to take that off the local districts to negotiate. And it became a state bargaining. So everybody is on the same plan. Everybody has the same cost structure, or every group does. So the teachers have something that's slightly different than the, the par educators and, uh, and then, or actually goes by licensed and non-licensed. Um, but we have pretty much no, no control other than our say, our say in V S B A.
Thank you.
Okay. So the, the budget, uh, it's, the page is, the first page is just a highlight of all of the significant items that are impacting the budget. Uh, and we'll go through those. And then the next, uh, so eight pages are the actual details of, of the budget. Won't go into the detail, the detail stuff in, in too much detail, just because there's a, there's a lot of in and outs. And most of the variances, or a lot of variances, and most of the variances are staffing changes or, um, uh, changes in health insurance. And, uh, so any changes in actual like increases in staff or decreases in staff, if there were any, would be highlighted on the summary of changes page. Uh, so right now, total expense is up by $192,000. Uh, and you can find that on page, uh, page seven in the gradient area at the bottom. Uh, that amounts to 3.3% increase. Uh, educational spending is up by 2.5%, $138,000. Educational spending is a calculation of total expense minus local revenues. The education spending is what will be used for the tax rate calculation. Uh, so you, you take what you, what your total spending is and you minus anything that's other than property taxes. So if you have any interest income, tuition income, uh, any surplus from the prior year or any other revenue that you may be, um, raising at the local level. And that, that becomes your educational spending. Uh, Meredith, do you have a question?
Sorry, it's not actually for you, Louis. Um, Patty is in the queue, um, and can't get into the meeting.
Oh, I'm, yep, I can see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did admit her, but I don't see her on there. Oh, there she is now. Okay. Uh, so the increase in health insurance of 16.4% amounts to approximately $58,000. Uh, we, we are increasing, uh, the FTE, the local funding of the interventionist by point two five. This is already an existing position. We've been funding it through ESRA funds. Uh, right now it's being funded through a mix of local funding, uh, ESRA funds and CFP funding. Uh, for next year, the, the estimate is to fund it through local funding and CFP with ESRA going away. Um, and due to the limitations of CFP, uh, we needed to increase the local funding. And that's approximately $18,000 increase. Uh, let's see, I'm estimating a decrease in tuition revenue. Uh, and that's just based on the, the current tuition students that are in our school. Um, we decreased kitchen staff and that's a savings of approximately $20,000. Uh, and that's a change that actually is in effect this year. Uh, so that'll be a savings for this year. Uh, we added the healthy foods program, which is a cost of $8,000. And, and that is a program that started last year and it's being funded through grant funds. It's being funded through grant funds this year. And with ESRA going away, if that, the program, the schools and board wish to continue, we would have to put that into the local budget. Uh, HRAs are being funded, uh, at 100% liability and that is approximately $70,000. Uh, let's see. Decrease in software expenses, actually, so, um, that is something I started to do based on, uh, based on the board discussion at the, at the SU meeting. And then I actually backed it out. Uh, so that is not in reflective in this budget. Uh, I just forgot to remove that comment. Tuition and other highlighted areas are right now pending. Um, I do have tuition numbers coming in. I don't have a more solid number at the next meeting. Uh, but we are looking at an increase right now based on rates going up at an estimate of 3%. Uh, student counts are pretty steady, but we're, I, I'm thinking that we're going to still see an increase of about $60,000 based on just the increase in tuition rates. That is not reflective in this budget. Um, that, that is just information that I've accumulated over the last couple of days. Uh, the full surplus is currently in the budget as a revenue and that's $129,000. So those are really the only changes in the budget compared to last year's or this year's budget right now, but last year's project process. Um, the only others, the, all the staffing changes that were mentioned in the summary of changes. Uh, there's really no other significant changes that are having an impact. Uh, so the increase is being based on an, an increase in contractual wages and benefits.
Amanda?
I might've missed it, Louis, but on page eight, can you explain the 54,400 in the SU bill back that is different from before? The Middletown, uh, direct instruction, it's on the bottom.
Page eight is from what I'm looking at.
I'm sorry, page two.
Okay, sorry. What, page? Page two. So that is for positions that are being funded or they're hired by the SU, but they're billed back directly and that would be the interventionist position. Because it's being funded partially through CFP funds, it has to be an SU position. You currently have $50,000, or I'm sorry, not $50,000, 50% of that position in your budget under the salary line. Uh, so that's why you do see a decrease in your salary line. They don't match because there's other things happening in that salary line. There's all the teacher increases already built into that. Normally that teacher line on page two would be an increase because teachers are receiving a contractual increase that's already built into here. Um, so that's offsetting that $54,000 increase. And that $54,000 increase under the bill back, uh, represents 0.75 of your interventionist.
And is that because in FY '24, it's grant funded? Is that the difference why it's not there for '24?
No, so, so 0.5 of the FTE is built into the teacher salaries lines. That's that first line on that section, on the teacher wages. It's being shifted because it was budgeted as a locally funded position. But because we're funding it partially through a CFP, we're shifting it from a locally funded position to an SU position and billing it back. The only, the only increase is a 0.25 and that's listed on the summary of changes. And that's an $18,000 increase. So if, if that line is 54,000 minus 18,000, so 36,000 of that would be built into the teacher wages and benefit line.
Okay. And then on page three, um, there's a $14,000 difference for the preschool wages. Is that, that's just regular wage increase that's not an additional person? Or is that like an additional para that makes up part of that difference?
No, that is just regular increase in wages.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the person in that position had a, a horizontal move, which allowed them to also move vertically on this pay scale. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I have more if nobody else does.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to find the page. Um, I think, um, it's about the, the disposal, like the, um, there's $9,000 budgeted as a whole for the trash disposal, which is like $750 a month. Did we look at changing that? And then also like, do you know if we're paying for our compost? Is that included in that? Could that be something that's looked at to maybe cut that number a bit?
Uh, so all of the, all of the trash removal expenses will be included in that. That would, that would include composting if you're disposing that in, in any other way. It's like, some people are giving it to farms. I'm not sure if that's happening in your schools. Um, if it is, then that would be, that would be included in here. Um, I am actually currently in the process of pricing out, moving our trash removal to other companies. Um, I've been, over the last couple of days, I've been collecting, uh, data on other vendors that are in the area. I sent an email out earlier this week to all of the facilities directors, confirming what each of their buildings has for dumpsters and how often their pickups are. And if they know of any other vendors that are in their area that are, could possibly service the schools. I haven't started reaching out to them yet. Um, at this point, I'm still in the data collection, but it is something that's on my to-do list. Um, I could potentially maybe have some information that, by the next meeting. Um, I'm not sure if we'll make a change. It'll be based on what the prices come in at and whether it makes sense or not.
One of my questions.
Yeah, a lot of our disposal line issue wide have increased, um, over the last few years. I mean, all of our lines have increased. Uh, part of that, I think, is also adding in, I mean, from five years ago, we, we have added in the composting. And I know I was having a conversation with Rich Holcomb today and, uh, the composting, uh, does add up because it, based on each 96 gallon container, I think he was saying it's like $30 a week. And, and they go through like four of them. So depending on how much your schools are going through and if it's not being given away to farmers, then it could add up pretty significantly.
Can I ask about the electricity on page, is it six? Yeah.
Yep.
Just want to understand it better.
Uh, so we are currently in a solar net metering contract. Uh, so we get a credit and so we're only paying, uh, we pay a fortune degree amount of power and we pay a fortune to, I believe it's Sun Wealth. Um, that's why it's broken up into two separate lines. Does that answer your question?
Um, no, I guess I'm not understanding why, uh, the budgeting amount for the electricity changes so dramatically from 11,000 some to 32,000 and back to 11,000.
So when we budgeted last year, we just budgeted it as one line. This year I've split up the line into two, two lines. The piece, the electricity line is what we're paying to GMP. The solar net metering is what we're paying to the solar company.
Okay.
And we are having savings, but rates continue to increase. Uh, usage continues to increase. So it, it's sort of like a catch-up game, even though we, we are having savings. Uh, if you look at where we were before we started this, we're still spending more. But if we weren't doing the, the net metering, we would be spending even more than what we were spending today. So I, if that makes any sense, but, um,
Yeah, it's a small savings, right?
It's a small savings. I, I think I actually I provided some information in the packet, I believe. Um, I think it was a little over $2,000.
Yep.
So if we didn't have that rather than budgeting for 34,000, we would be budgeting for $36,000.
And I think that's what, what we had estimated to save when we, when we looked into the contract. It's somewhere around 2,000 per school, right?
No.
Was it thousands?
That's correct. Yeah, that's total.
Okay. So, yeah. Uh, Matt?
Hey, a few questions. Uh, the healthy meals, is that harvest of the month program? Eight thousand? Healthy food program?
Chris is shaking his head, so I believe so. I'm not positive, but I think it's the same program.
Yes, yes, Matt, that's what that is, yes.
All right, great. I like that program. Like to see it on there. Um, the, the local revenue, the, uh, pre-K, after-school payment. I'm seeing F fiscal year '23, we pulled in a thousand bucks. That was it? That's parents contributing to after-school? For pre-K and I'm assuming grades K through K up?
Uh, that's the amount that went into the, so that, I think that only represents the pre-K piece. Um, I believe the other schools, uh, put their after-school money into a different account that they use to supplement the program, uh, to purchase supplies, snacks and do enrichment activities.
Okay. I think, like, if I, if, I think pre-K is $20 a day. So I'm surprised it's that low in terms of, uh, annual payments. Um, okay.
What page is that on?
That's on the first, that's on page two. The pre-K, after-school payment on the revenue, local revenue. Yeah, because if you figure it's $20 a day, if you did five days, it's a hundred bucks as a parent for one kid. And if you did four weeks, that'd be 400 just in one month. So, why it's only a thousand, I'm not sure. I think probably should be more.
I could connect with the schools. They should have records about that. So they're the ones that do the billing. So I could connect with the schools and see what they,
Yeah, because I assume we have a good after, a healthy after-school pre-K program. But, um, I'm not sure if,
I think it's only offered, or something. I think it's only offered in one school and it was only,
Currently, I think we're the only ones that have pre-K kids, depending on the day. We have one, maybe two.
Oh, I see. Okay.
But all of the pre-K and K to six, it all goes into the same.
So you're putting it into your, this may be just be for the summer program?
Maybe.
Um, I don't know. I, I could get more information and get back to you and see what period this pertain to and where all the other funds are.
Okay.
I do know the schools do put it into their student activities account and they have for many, many years.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, curious also about, um, I think I brought this up last year, but, uh, I hear on the radio, uh, you know, the cannabis, the legal cannabis market taxes are going to after-school and summer programming. And that, I guess it was a banner year last year. And I'm wondering if we're seeing any of that or if it, or like if a store has to be in your community to get that in, uh, income? Or if it takes a while for that to trickle in, I'm not sure. I don't know if you know it, Louis.
I know. So I, I believe you may have been you that brought that up last year. And I brought that question to one of my Vasbo meetings and asked the finance guy at, at the AOE. And at the time, he knew nothing about it. Um, he did say that it does take years for those things to, to trickle down to the actual schools.
Okay. Cool. Um, I had another question, but I, I think I forgot it. So, uh, I'll pass, I'll pass the mic and get, and grab a charger.
So I had a question about, uh, uh, transportation. Uh, so with, you know, it's on page six, sorry. Um, is that, uh, you know, if, if our transportation remains as it is, is that amount factored in for any increase we might see?
Um, Yeah, so this is factoring in, I believe I factored in a 4% increase. Um, it doesn't factor in any changes. Um, and as you can notice, that doesn't make sense because this isn't actually decreasing the budget.
Yeah.
And the reason behind that is, so we receive actually about 45% in reimbursement uh, from the state on all of our transportation. So what you see here is not our actual transportation costs. It only represents about 55% of our transportation costs. The other 45% is, we're receiving in revenue. Um, all the transportation costs are paid by the SU and that's where the revenue comes in. The transportation revenue is based on a lag, um, of, uh, it's a two-year lag. So the revenue that we're receiving this year is based on two years, uh, two years ago expense. And because our expenses has been increasing, so is our revenue. And so this year, the, the revenue that I'm estimating is, is actually going to, um, because we did have a huge jump in our expenses a couple of years ago, uh, when we, when we bid out the contract. Um, so I'm estimating that after we apply the updated revenue, our actual tuition or our transportation revenue cost is going to be a decrease for next year.
Wow. All right, that makes sense. I didn't know it was behind two years. That, uh, um, this doesn't make sense, but figures. Uh, Amanda?
That also includes the credit of, um, that, didn't we get a credit from Betia when they were not able to provide us with two buses? So that is included in there as well, correct?
Uh, that, so that was last year. That would have actually impacted actuals, not, not budgets.
Okay. And then, um, another, another question about transportation. Are we definitely set on, I guess it's kind of a question for everybody, but are we definitely set on two buses for FY '25 or were we still discussing the possibility of one bus? I thought we were gathering more information to see if we could make one bus work. Um, and then, you know, if, if the need for two buses is really because of our secondary kids that we're picking up to go, then could we look at having that done another way? Um, are we, I guess before we approve this, we need to decide if we're doing two buses.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, um, I think that was something that, uh, were brought up last month around transportation. Uh, I know, you know, we could eliminate a bus, you know? Um, but, you know, are there other alternatives working with Betia that we could use? Um, to, you know, reduce the cost. I don't, I know it, um, it's travel time, right? That they, or mileage that they, it's based on mileage and travel time. Yeah. So, so,
Both factor into it.
You know, I think, we, we had, we had discussions last year around transportation and, and I, you know, really wanted to, you know, look into it just to see if anything can be done around transportation. Um, you know, since the merger, we haven't done anything, you know, it's always, it's remained pretty much the same, you know, based on where, It's, it's remained pretty much the same, you know, based on where, you know, students are being picked up, but, you know. We did have discussions about, you know, looking into, you know, central pickup spots, um, y- you know. In a way to try and, you know, reduce the, the amount of travel time, so, you know, uh, I, I think. I, I, I think that's what you're talking about, Amanda, right? Something along that lines of. How can we take, um, you know, our current transportation and. And let's see if there's ways and savings rather.
Yeah, how can we, how can we make it work better, or can we make it any better? And, and how many students can we fit on one of our buses? Do we know off the top of our head?
There are seventy seven passengers, but I don't know how many are actually.
Right, because. Just for Wells, if we had every single student, including pre K, that's seventy six kids. So if we're really just transporting elementary and really probably only half of those take a bus. There's room for them. I think it's other ways that this, that we might not be fitting them, and I think that we need to look at that.
So I know that in looking, we have on our bus one, it services nineteen families. Twenty one of the students on the bus are Wells Village School, twelve are high school students. And on bus two, we service twenty five families. Um, twenty seven of the students are from Wells and fifteen are high school students, and the majority of those. Travel more than five miles to get picked up. So it, we did look at, we did look at condensing to one route. Not including high school kids, and it would not really change the time factor. For pickups, it would include stops, but it would not include. Or it would not really drastically increase the amount of time our kids were on the bus.
Oh, really?
So. If we, Wells Springs went to one bus to pick up. The twenty one Wells Village kids and the twenty seven Wells Village kids. On one bus, they would all fit, there'd still be room, and that would leave. Technically room for the high schoolers as well, but if not, the high schoolers could get picked up at the Wells School separately, correct? I guess it just, I know it's a deeper conversation and I'm sorry I'm bringing it up, but I do think we need to look at it and. And as a parent of a high schooler, I mean, my daughter misses fifteen minutes a day to. Leave early to get to Wells to pick the kids up for Polteney. And then the Wells kids in the morning on the flip side get there twenty minutes early to get. Polteney up to school on time. So we're accommodating each other, but we're not really accommodating ourselves. So I'm just, I just, I think we can make it better, and I think it can be a savings and I'm, I don't know, that's where I'm at, I guess.
Carol, uh, could I ask for the next meeting? Cause I know that we probably won't vote on the budget tonight, it'll go into December. Would there be any way you, you could take a look at the, the time that children would be on the bus if we reduce that to one route? Uh, from start to finish, I think that's something just for the board to consider as well as just for the public to have that information as well.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and I need to step out for a conference.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Uh, yeah, I, I think that, that's exactly what I was gonna say, if we can have some additional information, um. That would help, and I don't know if, um. You know, if, if it would help to, to work with Betcha and, and find out, you know, um. You know, how much, uh, distance and time is saved, um, but, you know, kind of. Piggybacking off of what Amanda was saying though too, is, you know, we, the, the buses are picking up. Um, the secondary students and, and they bring them to the school. And I guess my question is, um, how much of an impact? Is that, I mean, if, if the buses are going out of their way to pick up. The high schoolers who are gonna go to Polteney, for example, and it's extending, you know, the distance and the time. Is that gonna have an impact as well, you know, so?
It would not, if you were to keep two buses and drop the secondary students, it would not impact the price.
Okay, alright, yeah, that's good enough, alright.
Um, I've had conversations with Don o- over the years and the, the prices be-. The price is set based on a route, and the route changes from year to year because students change. So you may have a new student on this block that wasn't on there before, and they keep the price steady from year to year. Um, so by just, by decreasing the number of students, it's not actually changing the route. It is changing, maybe this number stops, but it's not changing the route, and that, so that would not impact the price.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know, um, if. Um, you know, if the route changes throughout the year too, I mean, it, it, does it remain the same, so if. If a, a new student moved in or something like that, obviously.
It doesn't, it doesn't affect.
It would not impact it. Okay, so there is some, some, I guess wiggle room.
And then that's for our benefit as well as, I mean, so I mean, sometimes you have students move in, sometimes you have students move out, so. As the road gets longer and you don't see a price increase, sometimes the road gets shorter and you don't see a price decrease, so. I- in the end, it's hopefully stays, it's to keep it steady and.
Okay, yeah, and, um. Okay, no, that's, that, uh, sounds good to me. Uh. Any other questions on the budget? I have.
So the other, the other item I think we should probably have a discussion about is after school programming.
Okay.
Um, so the Boys and Girls Club did give a presentation last night, um, I, I mean, we've talked about this, our goal is to. To, to outsource this to the Boys and Girls Club for the future. Um, by doing so, our goal would also be to make it a self sustaining program. Um, meaning that what they're collecting in, uh, parent fees and subsidies would cover the price of the program. Uh, which would potentially lead to budget savings. We do have. Uh, approximately forty thousand dollars in the budget, um, so if we were to, to go that route. I mean, you may wanna leave some of that money in there as, as a little bit of a buffer, but. We could potentially have some budget savings if we were to, to go that route and pull some money out.
Okay, I guess, you know, based off the, the presentation last night, you know. We don't know, I mean, if. And, and we didn't even vote on it last night.
They really weren't hanging a vote on last night.
Correct, Eric, that's something, something the board votes on.
Say that again?
That's not something the board would vote on, that's something we just bring, uh, to your attention.
Alright.
More budgeting considerations.
Well, okay. Um, so, you know, during the presentation, um, is, you know. The, you know, the, the plan is, is that it's gonna be, you know, implemented in stages, and I guess my concern is, is if. You know, will it, would it be up and running, you know, by September, or force, you know, for the beginning of the school years?
That would definitely be the goal in the plan, so, uh, right now, uh, for those of you that were not on the call last night. Uh, so we're active in Rutland Town, uh, we're currently in the process of getting Polteney Elementary School up and running. Uh, we are dealing with some delays at the state level of getting the licensing, um, where the goal was to have them up and running November first. Uh, we think that's gonna come through at any, um, at, at some point soon. But just due to the holidays, we thought it would be best to hold the switch off to January first. Um, rather than switching something in the middle, uh, to a new vendor, we figured it'd be cleaner if we just gave parents notice and, and just wait to after the holidays. Uh, at the same time, while we're waiting, while they're waiting for Polteney Elementary School, they have, they're starting the process to get. Proctor Elementary School and West Rutland School licensed, um, and right now we're targeting. A start date for the spring for those two schools. Uh, again, we'll evaluate that if, if it comes to like April. We will decide whether it makes sense to start a new program with only two months left in the school. Uh, we may decide that we're just going to get them all, get everything all set, get all the notifications out there. And just wait and start it July one with the summer program, and then continue that into the after school program in the fall. Um, but once, once the licensing is all done. Uh, they can sort of move on to the next task, would, which would be. Uh, Middletown and Wells would be the next two schools that they would target. Uh, so if they started that sometime in late winter, early spring, uh, we would again be looking at either. A July one start or September one.
Okay. Uh, Amanda, you got your hand up?
My understanding, eh, maybe I'm wrong, um, but my understanding last night when they explained. You know, kind of the order of where they were going, and then eventually Middletown and Wells. Was that their goal would be to have people for our area, but it didn't really sound guaranteed. So if we switch to this program and it snows and they're coming from Rutland and we don't have people, but it's not enough to call a snow day. Who does that fall on? The parents just don't have anyone to keep their kids, or is there some form of guarantee that if we do it, they'll definitely be there?
So I, I believe what they said last night, and I know this to be true, is that they. Uh, because that's what they're looking at for Polteney Elementary School. Um, they prefer to utilize community members for their programs. They're not hiring from Rutland to come to a Wells program. Their, their goal is to hire local community members to run each of the local programs, cause that's what works best. So they would be pulling from first and foremost, people that you already have working in your program, so. Maybe Middletown employees, Wells employees. Um, if those, or if they're not interested, or those don't work out, then they'd be looking at those towns' community members. Uh, they pull a lot of workers from Castleton College, um, both as interns as, and as paid employees. Again, that's not too far, uh, it's not Rutland, it's, I mean, a little farther than Wells and Middletown. Um, and then they said in emergency situations, they have for admin. For the Boys and Girls Club who are in and out of programs on a daily basis for those emergency type events, so. Uh, someone calls out sick, uh, potentially a snow day, um. Or another type of emergency where they need to fill into, into those programs. But if you have people working in your programs now, they would reach out to them to look to hire them.
Matt?
Sorry, so this, would this, would the Borough Boys and Girls Club, uh, kind of be the after school director? Would they, would they take that role there, the, they're offering, they're sort of managing the after school program? I'm just trying to level set since I wasn't on the call, yes.
Correct, they would, they would manage the program from start to finish, so. Um, they would do all the hiring, uh, they, they are in charge of all the activities, they have the staffing here, they, they're planning it. Uh, they provide after, after school snack, they provide a full meal for dinner, um, uh. They take care of all of the billing for the parent billing as well as the subsidy billing. Uh, all of the paperwork, uh, not, the only thing that we do is provide a space, and we. Collaborate with them as far as communications and whatever's necessary, but they handle everything else.
And Louis, they have the capacity to go till six thirty at night as well?
That is correct, so most of their programs go to six thirty. The program that we started, we only went to five thirty because that's what we were doing in our other schools, um, but if, I'm. Once we start shifting all of our programs to the, to the Boys and Girls Club, we have that opportunity to, they actually prefer to go to six thirty because. They want their director to be a salaried position. And in order to make them a salaried position, they have to work a certain number of hours, and having them at five thirty makes that a little bit more difficult, though. Either that, or there's a lot of downtime. Um, so I would imagine for Wells and Middletown, they would have one director that shared between both buildings. Uh, and then they would have staff at each building.
Alright, uh, Matt?
Hey, is this, is this just for students that. Uh, are at our schools, or is it open to other community, like, uh, homeschoolers or other folks that wanna do this as well? Do you know?
Uh, that is.
I, I was saying, Louis, I think it would be something we would be looking at just for our students. This would not be an open enrollment. We're looking just to service our students currently.
Got it.
So we have, you said you have, we have forty thousand budgeted for after school program?
Yes, there's about, uh, I think there's twenty five thousand at one school and twelve thousand at another school. Uh, and then there's the benefits that are associated with those positions that would be in the fight and ready.
So if.
And then there's also seven thousand in summer school funds with, on top of that, and. They, if they're running our after school program, they would also run our summer school programs.
Okay, so I guess. Um, so we could, we could save forty thousand dollars by relying on this program. But if it didn't, if something happened and it didn't start, then we wouldn't have anything budgeted for it, correct?
Correct, but we, as we talked about last year, um, I mean, our goal is to move towards a self sustaining program with or without Boys and Girls Club. And bringing Sarah Taylor on as our early ed and after school program coordinator. Um, she would help, uh, facilitate that as far as in, we talked about increasing our, our billing amounts. Um, we know subsidy, subsidy rates are increasing by thirty five percent starting in January. Um, so it's, it's coming up with a more detailed staffing plan as far as making sure that we're pro- appropriately. Appropriately staffed for the people that are participating. I think, um, currently, or at least last year. Uh, people would just pop in and out and they would only pay for the days that they wanted to come. But it would be more of, okay, you're paying for the week and you're, you're setting, you're paying by the week, and if you only need to be here three days. We still need to have staff members whether you're here or not. If you're saying, if you're gonna be in the program, we're staffing it for you to be the program. If you don't show up, that doesn't. Doesn't decrease the amount you need to pay, so it's those type of things, um, so that what we're bringing in in revenue is paying. What's going out the door. So that's, that's the boys, that's what the Boys and Girls Club is going to do, and whether we go with them or not, that's something that we should look at doing. In the near future as well.
Okay, makes sense. Uh, the only other question I had was, uh, we have, uh, for, on page six. Uh, under, uh, plant operations, we've got, uh, um, the building repair lines, um. Wells, Middletown and, and Wells Springs, um, I, I, I think that, uh, and I don't know if, if. I might, my recollection might be wrong, but I think, you know, part of having, uh, um. The, using some of the surplus for the capital maintenance fund is to, uh, I guess, offset some of the, the budgeted amount. Is that something that would be, I don't know, advisable or make sense, you know, if, if we were looking at? Um, a- and I, I don't even know what would make sense, because, you know, we overspent, you know, significantly last. Last school year on, um, on all the, the maintenance stuff, but.
Uh, so I know a lot, I mean, we just finished the, the project at. Um, Middletown, the painting and the repairs there, and we know there's no shortage of more repairs that need to happen in our buildings. But I think what you're saying is the possibility of maybe reducing one of those lines and falling back on our capital improvement fund. It's not something that I would recommend. I think there's plenty of projects in bulk at rules.
Yeah.
Um, and there are the state, the reports that are gonna be coming out from the state fairly shortly, which are gonna identify.
I was just saying, Louis, let me talk about that real quick, cause I was gonna include in my superintendent's report, so. Uh, as you, we're all aware, two thousand twenty one, the General Assembly passed Act Seventy Two. And one of the main components of Act Seventy Two was that the AOE was going to conduct a facilities assessments in all of Vermont schools. Last week, we received the facilities assessments for each of our buildings. We are in the, what's called the, the editing and proofing stage, so I met with, uh, Louis and I met with the building admins. And the facilities directors to review the first draft, uh, and then we have until December sixth to make any corrections or edits. We, uh, will then send, I'll send that back to the state, and then we are hoping that in early January. We will, uh, get a final draft back. Once we have that final draft, we will then bring that back before the local boards. Cause part of this act is, then we do have to build out a five year capital improvement plan. And I know that i- in, in our initial looks, there, there are some big ticket items that we. Really should be looking at, uh, saving the capital improvements really to, uh, to take care of, so I, I don't know if Louis actually gonna say, but. Uh, we'll, you, you know, we'll have more information in January, right around there, once we receive the final, uh, draft of the assessment reports. So.
Okay, yeah, that was just a general question, I just, um. And again, just kind of based off our discussion last year, and, and I know there's some huge projects, so.
Yeah, and I think once we catch up and are, are not in a sort of an emergency situation, we can start looking at. Projects that will have payback. Um, and some things that are going to have continuous savings, like looking at our lighting and maybe replacing with L E D. Or looking at our, uh, furnaces and see if, if, if there's efficiencies that we can create. So that we're spending our money wisely and getting, um, maybe something new, but also gonna, that's going to have savings and it's going to pay itself back in over the next five, ten years.
Okay.
Right, in addition, we're also going to be working with building administrators and actively looking at grants, which may help offset costs in the next couple of years, so.
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense. All right, so any other, any final thoughts on the, uh, budget, Matt? I saw your hand.
Yeah, so, so I just, uh, on the, when we're talking about maintenance, there, I noticed that there's maintenance lines for, I guess, the classrooms. It was like small amounts, like four thousand here, four thousand there. Um, that's for repairs, maintenance that happens in individual classrooms, I'm assuming. But we're not moving, uh, grouping that in with our other general maintenance funds?
It, it's not the same type of repairs, it's not building repair maintenance, um, it could be copying machines, uh, the maintenance for those machines and, and stuff like that, it's not repairs to build it.
Understood, thank you.
Um, so, so this is the first draft that we're looking at and I, I, it looks like it's in a good place right now, it's only at the three point three percent. Um, and so that there's no surprises, next month, we, we will be looking at an increase for the second draft, I already started that. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we know tuition increase is, I'm, I'm going to say roughly, you're going to add to about a sixty thousand dollars. Um, also, the S U budget was approved last night, uh, and that is looking at approximately a four percent increase in the general fund, as well as a four percent increase in the special ed fund. Um, and, and those are not factored into this, because this is still at last year's amounts until, until that budget was approved. Um, in addition to this, I, I, uh, Wells Springs portion of the special ed budget increased because they had an increase in, uh, student count. So they're seeing a larger number, a, a larger, larger percentage increase. So the increase for a special ed assessment for Wells Springs is fifty-eight thousand. And the increase for the general fund is nineteen thousand, so that's, between the two of them, roughly seventy-eight thousand. Uh, so you add that to the tuition, you're looking at about a hundred and forty thousand dollar increase over what's in here right now.
Louis, well, the increases in, in the budget for healthcare reflect the sixteen point four?
Yes, they did, okay, yeah, yeah. Um, the other thing that I want to mention, uh, on the revenue side, page two. Um, I'm still working out the details on this and I'll have more information next month. Uh, but the small schools grant of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, so when you merge, do you receive that and it kind of locked it in, uh, in per, uh, perpetuity? Or until the legislation was changed? Well, with Act One Twenty-seven and the waiting, uh, there is language that if you're a small school, uh, you're going to get a in, a factor that increases your equalized pupils. Uh, but it's going, i- i- it's like if, if you qualify for this, it's going to, so it increases your equalized pupil count, but it eliminates your small schools grant. Um, based on what my early calculations, and I'm still waiting on some data from Milt, who's our data manager, um, we should receive about twenty-six additional students in, in our equalized pupils. Equalized pupils is actually going away, that's what they used to call it. With Act One Twenty-seven, it's now called long-term weighted, uh, average or weighted A D M. Um, which should increase, or it should have a positive. I'm trying to say this, and so it's going to increase the amount of credit you're receiving. And so it's going to lower your tax rate based on my early calculations. It's going to be equivalent to approximately two hundred and forty thousand, I believe. Um, so I, I believe that's going to be a, a positive change, um, but I'll have more details on that at the next meeting.
Long-term weighted what?
It's a long-term weighted A D M.
Oh.
Uh, okay, this new model is a lot more complex than the old model. Uh, we'll spend more time in at the last, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, so i- it's changing the equalized pupils number, it's a limit, it's going to change the yield. Uh, it's estimated, the yield is currently about sixteen thousand. It's estimated the yield is going to drop to about ten thousand dollars. Uh, a decrease in the yield increases tax rates, but it's, it's, the offset should be, it's going to give you more of these long-term weighted A D Ms, which is going to offset the drop in the yield. Um, but I'll, I'll go into the step-by-step next month, but I just wanted to let you know, these are the type of things that are coming, uh, that are going to impact the budget.
Okay. Uh, Amanda? Okay, I should take your hand down, I guess, all right. So, all right, so that, uh, that kind of clarifies everything. So, yeah, we're definitely going to see an increase next month and then you'll have probably that tuition information and.
No, all right, so is there anything in this budget that you want us to? Any change, based on the budget we have in front of you, any changes that you want us to make for the next meeting, whether it be increases, decreases? Or you want to kind of just wait and see what it looks like next month? And, I mean, I know we've talked about after-school program, we've talked about transportation, but I'm not hearing any definitives as to, if there's anything you want us to take out?
Yeah, I think, I think with the transportation, I, I think we're going to wait for that information for that. Uh, and as far as after-school program, um, yeah, I'm, I mean, I don't, i- if, without knowing definitely that the Boys and Girls Club is going to, you know, take off, it's, I'm not sure if it would, um, make sense to take it out of the budget and, you know what I mean? But I know you said that, you know, the whole point is would be self-sustaining anyway, right? So, I don't know, uh, what does anyone else think? I haven't heard from everyone.
Man, I think if we can go with one bus versus two, it makes a lot of sense. And it's good on a lot of different counts, but we need that information to do that.
Yeah. After-school program?
We've got forty thousand budgeted?
Forty thousand for after-school and seven for summer.
Man, yeah, we, that's got to stay on the off chance they don't get the license or for some reason they can't get the people. Um, need to be able to fund it somehow.
Yeah. I mean, as far as the rest of the budget goes, I mean, I don't, it, it's all salaries and tuition, so I mean, yeah, so. I, I guess, you know, my thought is, is maybe at the next meeting, um, what we see, but the final, um, numbers give a definitive on, on the transportation and after-school. But, yeah. Okay. Any objection to that? Okay, all right. All right. So, thank you, Louis, um, and that's all you have for budget?
Yes.
All right. All right, so we'll move on to consent agenda, um, everything is in the, uh, the Google Drive. So we'd be looking for a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda, um, uh, as it's, as it is, um.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Meredith. All right, all those in favor approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, um, all right, uh, reports, superintendent's report.
Thanks, Eric, I have a few, just a few things to discuss. I know we have, uh, fast bridge and some other items, which are going to take some time, so I'll be quick. Uh, most of this report is for informational purposes, uh, as this time of year, we are working on budgets. Uh, as we are starting to prepare for town meeting, I know that they'll, they'll start to ramp up. The one thing I would ask, and I have placed this in the, the report, is to double-check open board positions. Just to make sure that, uh, for accuracy, I asked Christine McGinnis to provide me this information. But please, if your name is listed there, make sure that, one, that it should be listed, as well as for the length of term. If there are any issues or any problems, you can email me or Christine McGinnis and we'll make that correction right away. Uh, we will be sent out more information, uh, prob- a little bit after Thanksgiving, just about next steps and what we need to do with this. Uh, I do want to highlight the V S B and thank Eric, uh, who attended the V S B, V S A Fall Conference in Lake Maury, it, it was a good conference. And I'll, uh, Eric will talk a little bit more about that during his chair report. Uh, but we did include in my superintendent's report, just kind of some highlights, uh, that, uh, from Eric, uh, Tina Kishiva, uh, Linda Smith, who also attended, uh, just different workshops, but it was a great conference. And I would encourage in the future, if any of you have an opportunity to attend one of these workshops, conferences, I think it's, uh, time well spent. I, I personally, four years doing this, I think this was the best one, uh, I think we had some, uh, great information, great workshops. Uh, it is a little bit of a hall that's up in Lake Maury, you know, Lisa Madison and I were up there, uh, Lake Maury again today for the Principal Supervision Academy, that's where participating for the remainder of the year, so I apologize out there. But, uh, it, as I said, it is a great experience and a lot of good information. So, if you have any questions on the report, we'd be more happy to answer them, or anything else.
No question? I, I didn't realize, Meredith, you, you were up again.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm double-checking that right now, that's actually what I went to get, uh, was the town officers. Um.
Yeah, Meredith, it seemed like you were just.
It expires in twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, uh, so I'm, I'm intending on running again. Uh, and just so everyone knows, uh, I, I don't believe, uh, oh, I know Cara is not running again, so. Um, that'll be, um, one opens position. So, you know, if you know someone, spread the word, um. Uh, so, and then, and then Meredith, are you, are you sticking with us for?
You've already had. Uh, I'm, yeah, I, uh.
You're, you're hesitating there, Louis.
Uh, that's a decision, I guess, isn't it?
Okay. All right, so, um, so if, if there's no questions for, uh, our superintendent, then we'll move on to principal reports. Um, and then we'll, we'll go with, uh, Cory, because Carol's not. Carol might still be in a conference, so.
Um, sure, um, so being in November, I've had the opportunity to go and visit many of our teachers' classrooms, um, walkthroughs and observations. One of the exciting things that I'm seeing is, um, as an S U, we purchased a subscription to All Learners Online, which is the All Learners Network, which is, um, it's a Vermont-based, uh, resource for us. Um, and teachers are utilizing these resources to help implement math menus in their classroom and differentiate learning materials. Um, so it's been really exciting to see them bringing that in because it's high-quality material. Um, John Carlson and I met with Up For Learning, uh, we're participating with them again, our fifth and sixth graders, it'll be voluntary. Um, working with them just around, uh, school culture, looking at our, at our climate survey data and, um, looking to make improvements. Uh, my understanding is that they've participated in the past, so we're going to continue that partnership moving forward. Um, and then we've just, October has been an exciting month. Uh, we had Fire Safety Week, the volunteer fire department joined us and presented to students. They brought a couple of the fire trucks, um, by, the kids got to go out and explore the fire trucks. Um, they learned about kitchen safety, that was the theme for this year. Um, students at both schools were treated to a mime and dance performance that was set up, uh, by Ashley Fioretti, which was pretty exciting, the kids really enjoyed that. Uh, we held our annual Halloween parade, the kids dress up and, and the staff dress up and we march down to the green, march around the green. The kids get to have pickles taken and then the community comes back to the school for treats, um, so it was nice to have everybody in the building. And then we just wrapped up our soccer season, um, we had a, a first and second grade skills team, um, that was coached by Amanda Williams, our, uh, second grade teacher. And then Jody Ruck, uh, coached our third through sixth grade. I was able to watch the last game against Slate Valley, um, and it was, they were great. So they've, they've improved a lot this year, so we're looking forward now to, uh, basketball and our rock climbing team.
Nice. Any questions? All right, um, I don't think Carol's back yet, so we can always come back to her, um.
So, just one quick thing on the P A system, is that something we're looking at?
It's just kind of an out there and Eric and I have spoken a little bit based on a conference that he went to, so it's not, we're not looking at purchasing anything right now, but it's just kind of a concern. I think in both buildings, our P A system is all through the phone. And so it's not, well, you can't hear it on the playground, um, and in some rooms, like in this room specifically, when you've got music lessons going on, you can't hear announcements, um, which is, you know, could be a safety concern if, if we needed to make an announcement that everybody needed to hear. Um, what we've done in the meantime is we've purchased radios, walkie-talkies that all staff have, they're expected to keep them on throughout the day. So that's a second form of communication that we can use while we look at, at possibilities of, of how to improve.
Is it something the Facilities Committee should look at? Uh, is, that's a question, that's all, should that be on our agenda?
I think it's worth the conversation, yeah.
Okay.
Because Carol has it on hers as well, I know that Wells faces the same challenges that we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, I do believe that the, the cost is well over forty thousand dollars, correct?
For?
For the P A system, I think when you spoke with the representative at the conference, I think the ballpark that.
I, I never got any pricing from him. Yeah, and, and, and I was going to, yeah, I was going to talk about that a little bit, um, but it, I never, I never asked him about price, I asked him, um, about getting a quote, you know, like an estimate, how to do that. And he actually sent me an email and I'll, I could forward it with a link to a form. And I didn't, I didn't do anything with it, because it probably shouldn't be me filling that out. So, um, I can forward that along to, to see what it would be. Um, but, so everyone knows what we're talking about and we're just kind of piggyback on to, on to, to my report here in regards to the V S B A conference, they have, uh, sponsor workshops there. And one of their sponsor workshops is called Audio Enhancement, where they specialize in audio enhancement in schools and, and other facilities. Um, and so I shared that information with, um, Scott Hathaway, Cory and Carol. Um, and then I gave Cory some of the actual material that I had. Um, and, uh, and I shared it with them because our next Facility Committee meeting isn't until like January. So that way, the administrators can look into this and our facilities manager can look into this and see if this is something that would work. But absolutely, and because I have taken note that in a lot of the principals' reports, that is listed as a, as, um, a, an issue with the, the, uh, the communications in the classroom, so. Uh, but as far as, uh, uh, my report goes, I just kind of summarized everything. Uh, you know, the conference was, uh, it was, it was a really good conference and it was centered around, uh, supporting student success through, uh, school district governance. Um, and this actually kind of relates to the, uh, district governance standards that the A O E is implementing July first, twenty twenty-five. And so in the Google Drive, I added the, um, one hundred series A O E rule on district governance and, um, just for, uh, I guess. I guess, a reference for, for everyone. You know, and the expectation is, is that, you know, by 2025, boards are, are doing all this, which most boards should be doing anyway, and and then I also threw in the, the self-assessment. It's just a, a basic self-assessment that is part of the district governance standards that board should be doing annually. So, anyway, it's just information. Did anyone have any questions on that? At all? Okay, and so, so going back to the conference, you know, I just, I just summarized it in the report. I learned quite a few things, so, and as, you know, Chris was saying, I would also encourage board members to attend if you can. You know, there's, there's also, you know, networking with other board members and yeah, I would consider it like, like voluntary professional developments, if you want to call it that. And for the facility committees, our, our last meeting we had was last month. We won't have another one for a few more months. And I just kind of summarized what we discussed. So if anyone has any additional questions about those items, you know, I can answer them now, but it's just, just kind of cover where we're at on the facility committee. So, any questions? All right.
Sorry, quick question. Just curious if the, the alarm system in Wells comes with any sort of announcement, like technology?
The, the alarm system?
Yeah, the, the, a new alarm system, if that came with anything that would let us also leverage that to like do PA announcements. Or is it just strictly fire suppressant fire alarm?
I believe it does. I, I don't have the, the contract with me. But I can follow up with you on that if you like, but I think it does. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, got it. So we could potentially leverage that to be our PA system? Instead of paying the 40 grand? Could be nice.
I'm not sure. I think the, the audio enhancement piece would tie into whatever is, it, it can tie into. And this is what I was told, it can tie into the, like the fire alarm system, so.
Oh, you still have to hang the speakers or whatever around the classrooms and such, probably. Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. All right. So Carol, Carol, are you back yet? That's fine. We can always come back to her. All righty, so.
She's here.
Oh, okay. I, I know you're busy, Carol, so we were just on, on reports, and if there's something you wanted to add to your report, or if someone had any questions for you?
No, I think the only thing I would say is that I feel like the, the events that we're doing together are really, really wonderful, and I think the potential that they could build community is, is there. And so I think the more we tweak them, the better they'll be.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna move on to unfinished business for, for our district clerk, so we have, as everyone knows, our, our district clerk resigned and reaching out and working with the Middletown Springs clerk shared some interest in taking on the responsibilities of district clerk. Patty Kenyon is here tonight. Patty, did you, did you want to add anything to, or did you have any questions for the board? As far as being district clerk at all?
Um, well, first of all, I just, I don't know what you've shared. I know what I shared with you, but I'm not sure what you've shared with the other board members, so if anyone, if you've shared what I wrote to you, then that's fine, but does anyone have questions of me regarding those, you know, my input on what the district clerk should, what the job entails and what should come along with it?
I have not shared that yet, and I was about to. So what, what Patty shared with me is basically what the compensation or stipend should be in regards to district clerk. So currently, from what I understand, it's only $100. And what she, Patty shared with me in the email is that her opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would be $1,000 for the district clerk as a stipend. And then an additional stipend separate for, that would go toward help, correct? For the host town, it would be $500. And for the non-host town, it would be 250. And, and that would be basically paying people to assist for election night, correct?
Correct. So to run an election, you need people. I can't run an election by myself. And so I would, in, I have to run the entire town election before I can run the school election. And so that means that the people that I'm hiring to be my election workers have to work longer hours, and the town normally pays that, right? So in my opinion, the town shouldn't take the burden of paying election workers for a school election. The, the school should share that burden. So that's, that's where those, the, you know, that's where my numbers come from, and, and for the non-hosting town, and they also have to take care of their school ballots, and two people have to drive those ballots in their vehicle to the other town to be counted and put into the tabulator, and also stay there and wait and be part of that election counting system. So it's, it's at least, you know, it can be up to two or three hours. It's probably if you're, if it goes quickly, it can be an hour. But you don't know. And, and I think that that should be per election, because if, say, for instance, a school budget doesn't pass, the town has to run an entire election specifically for the school. And so, you know, to me, it's fair that the school pays for that. I mean, the school, I know the school pays for the ballots and all of the setup and, and the card that goes in the tabulator already. That's a school budget item, but the people who actually run the election have not been being compensated. And if you want to keep a clerk, then something, you know, has to change.
Okay, Meredith?
And, and Patty didn't mention that there's also additional work that's done before the election besides the petitions. There's also the testing of the ballots and the tabulator. And so that's all additional hours as part of the election, so it's not just the day of or the night of the election.
Correct, Meredith, thank you. Yeah, so to get ready for the election, we have, I have to bring people in because I can't test the ballots by myself because it's an open election and there needs to be other BCA members there, and they need to get paid. And we need to go through all the options on the ballot and run it through the machine in five different ways and prove everything out. And then, you know, so that's another couple hours to, to bring people in to do that testing piece, plus collecting all the petitions and making sure the ballot's correct and doing all that proofreading so that when we get the ballot, it's what, what you want.
Okay. I had a question. For, do you, for help on election night, do you always pay folks, or do you have like volunteers at all? Because I know Wells relies on volunteers.
In Middletown, we've never had volunteers. The clerk volunteers because that's part of her job, so it's not really volunteering. That's part of your job. I don't get paid extra to be there, but every other election worker gets paid to be there. And I'm, I'm staffing from 7:00 AM to seven, to probably nine or nine, 9:30 at night on an election. And we pay, so just so you know, we don't, you know, we pay minimum wage plus 50 cents to our election workers. That's what they get paid. And only the reason we do it that way is because there was a time when minimum wage changed and we paid our, we didn't, we, the treasurer didn't realize it because we don't pay anybody else minimum wage, and we were actually not paying people enough money. So we added 50 cents so we'd never get in that situation again.
Gotcha. Amanda?
Is this something that you want a decision on right now, or is this to be a further discussion in executive session or discussed now? What, when are you looking for a decision on this?
Tonight. I mean, it's not, it's not eligible for executive session for one. And yeah, so we need to make a decision tonight.
Okay, so in, in regards to the help, Patty, I guess this is a question for you. In regards to the help on election day, would you be opposed to taking, like if there were Wells volunteers or taking volunteers, or are you set on keeping your staff that you already have? I know like in the past, I've been at the town hall, Eric's been at the town hall, other board members, and we've kind of just helped and then also done the transporting. Would you be opposed to the people that transport staying and volunteering their time to assist, or, or would you rather keep the staff that you pay?
So the rules basically, well, the basically are is that you're, you need, those people that transport the ballots need to be appointed election workers, which is a, which is something that also is a formal process that has to happen, or BCA members. So because your election needs to be overseen by both towns, not just one town, because it's a dual-town election. So those people, whether Wells pays them or not, is not up to me. That's why I, that's why I set it up in terms of the, the non-hosting town should be offered a stipend as well because they have work to do that surrounds the election. And then the hosting town has a whole much bigger pot of work to do and responsibility for that election. And, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna, so your, your people would be there, they wouldn't be paid by, by Middletown. We have our own BCA members and approved election workers, and you know, so we, we certainly not, we're not picky by any means because we need to take, we, we need a lot of volunteers. I know that Wells polls are not open as long as Middletown's polls. From 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM is a lot of shifts and a lot of people, and we have to have, you know, we've got six people on staff all day long, and then when we go to count, it's, it's less, right? It's less people, but we need enough people in counting teams in order to work to count write-ins. Now, I know that also this, the school board in the past doesn't have a lot of write-ins. We have a lot of write-ins, we have a lot of voters, right? So my election is going to take, you know, it could be an hour or two hours before I'm even done with my election. I know Wells elections go quick. Our elections do not go quick because we have a lot of write-ins and we have to process all of those, you know, all of those ballots as write-ins, and we get, I'm thinking on a presidential election, so the one coming up, the first one I'm going to be doing, we're, the last general election, we had 500 voters. And so, and, and on a town meeting, we normally have 350. So it's, I know Wells has 150 and we had 350. So all of those things factor in for me because it's, it's a lot of time and it's a lot of ballots to go through. It's a lot of work.
No, I, I understand that, and I, I respect that. It definitely is a lot. I guess my question was, would you be opposed to Wells volunteers assisting you in Middletown in place of your paid staff at the time of the school counting, like towards the end? So they could leave earlier because your election would be done, and the Wells people could volunteer their time to continue those steps?
Certainly, I'm, I'm open to a few, but I have to have some Middletown people there too, because we, part of that election is hap, I have to have a couple of BCA members. I can't just have me and no other Middletowners, because that's not legal.
Okay. So, I mean, in regards to, how, how do people feel about the, the monetary amount for district clerk and, and the stipend amounts?
Is the $1,000, like if our budget doesn't pass and we do it again, would that be another $1,000, or is that just the 250 and 500?
That would be, that would be just for, that's just a stipend, but it would be another potentially 500 or 250. So potentially up to another 750 for another election. Because the idea is, is that you would have to pay those people again. And, and I would imagine that, you know, there's, there's some flexibility in that too, because, you know, if someone's volunteering, they don't necessarily, that, all that amount's not going to be used, right?
Right, I mean, yeah, and if Wells didn't, if Wells didn't want a stipend as the non-hosting town, they wouldn't have to take their stipend for the, for the actual election stipend as, in terms of, but yes, the clerk stipend is a set amount, no matter how many elections, but the, the town stipend that pays the town workers is to cover that cost, and I just think it should be a set amount because I don't think you wanted, I think the accounting for how many hours were school and how many hours was town, after you've already worked 15 hours a day, trying to keep track of all that would just be, you'd need to pay me another $1,000.
So what is, what is minimum wage now plus 50 cents?
12 something, I don't know exactly, but it's 12, 12s.
I think minimum wage is 13, 18?
13, okay, there you go, 1368. Thank you, thank you, Lewis. And in March, it might be more.
Yep, I think it's supposed to increase in January. I'm not sure of what, though.
I'm sorry, I still don't think I'm understanding. So the, the $1,000 for the clerk would be for the whole year, the whole school year, $1,000?
Correct.
Then, election number one, it's $750. 500 pays for Middletown's workers, 250 pays for Wells workers.
Right, and it's not just for workers, so I don't want you to get hung up on, well, if I only, if I have less people, it'll cost less. It's a stipend. It covers the lights, it covers all of the other things that hosting something entails, right? For the town. This is not for this, for the, the clerk. This goes to the town of Middletown Springs to help us offset the costs of having an election. And so, and if, you know, I just felt that that was fair because it's a lot, you know, you're hosting, you're, you're paying your people, you're, you're keeping the lights on, all of those things.
No, it's, it's at the, I think it's at the town, it would be at the town office.
It happens at the town office in Middletown Springs.
Well, my understanding of, why, why I reached out to, you know, the, the election secretary of state's office is that, you know, the, the,
Is that um, you know, the the. These, the town clerks are administering the elections anyway. And, you know, I I just, I thought, I was under understanding that like the 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 hosting stipends. Was essentially just to get people to come in and help work. But I didn't think it was gonna go to the town for an election that they're already running anyway. Um, for for lights or whatever, I know.
Well, so when when, if there's a revote. Then the town wouldn't already be running an election.
So then we would only do the five hundred if there's a revote, if that's the case?
Well, you you can propose whatever you'd like to propose and the town and the. Town clerk of Middletown Springs can choose to accept it or not accept it, but the point is that. The the town, the school cannot host their election without the town involved. Because the ta- the elections happen at town halls. And so, to me. It's just fair to pitch in because it costs us three or four thousand dollars to run an election.
Lewis, what do the other local districts do?
Uh, currently, none of the other districts are paying for the elections. Uh, there's a hundred dollar stipend for the Quarry Valley Clerk. Uh, Rutland Town does not pay the clerk um anything and then Ira does not pay the clerk anything. I I I'll edit that a little bit. Rutland Town pays, the the clerk is also their treasurer. They so they pay their treasurer. Uh, for treasury services. Um, so there is a payment going to the town for that person, but it's not for the election, it's for being the treasurer. Uh, Meredith?
But those are slightly different situations because. They're not a merged district, you know, there's not two towns feeding into a district, so Rutland Town. Isn't going to pay, you know, if it was just Middletown Springs, we wouldn't. We're just, we're just paying ourselves, so that doesn't really. Yeah, I mean, if with Quarry Valley, I can see that that's more in line with what we're talking about.
Well, I for comparison, I I think our our treasurer is, we're paying fifteen hundred or. Yes, or something like that for, but that's a year around stipend, that's. What, every two weeks?
Uh, she's signing AP warrants every two weeks and any payroll warrants every other two weeks, so every every week she's potentially being utilized, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, um, I don't know, I think um. The um. I'm not sure uh. Like how much time is is done or spent. Um, you know, aside from election night, um, I do think that, you know, just. With conversations, uh, you know, with our previous clerk that. You know, it is a lot of work, uh, and that um the hundred dollars. Probably doesn't compensate very well uh compared, but um, yeah. I I don't know, I my thought was, I was thinking, you know. You know, for a district clerk stipend, um, you know. Not a thousand, but like seven fifty. Um, and then I I'm not, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but. What you're, what you're talking about with the um, um, the the host town and a non-host town for 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 hiring individuals. To work the election, it makes sense, um, you know, especially if um, if you don't have anyone to help. It it's a lot of work for even a few people, uh, but I think if anything, both the amount should be the same. Um, and that's just my opinion. I don't know what anyone else thinks on the amounts for for this.
I I would agree that if there is an amount, they both be the same because we're working towards. Collaboration and, you know, equality and making things equal within our district, not paying one town two hundred and fifty dollars more. Than the other town, but I also don't know. I I don't know how I feel about the five hundred either. I mean, if we can, we can utilize some people and then get some volunteers, can't we just? Take it upon ourselves to volunteer ourselves or find people to volunteer and then the two fifty total covers it? To assist them?
Well, that's beside the point. That's a whole nother conversation that, you know, and and a lot of hypothetical. I just think we need to figure out. What the board wants to do as far as compensation goes. Whether you're in favor of um increasing the stipend or um. And and in having these um additional amounts um for the towns or or not.
I mean, overall, you're not ta- talking about a large significant impact to your budget. Um, I I think the, i- in the beginning of the conversation, I was a little confused and I think Patty clarified. Um, as far as the stipends go, I mean, I don't think stipend is the best word to be using. Um, because I was kind of wondering, uh, who are we paying this to? And I think paying to the town, it's more of a reimbursement to the town for. Um, for all of the expenses related to the to to the. Election and and paying all the workers on a day for for the full day, which I'm sure is amounting to significantly more than two hundred and fifty dollars or five hundred dollars. Um, because I was, as we were going through the conversation, I was sort of thinking, well, if the town paid them and we sort of reimbursed the town for. A portion of that relates to the extra work, um, but if we're paying it directly to the town, that's sort of what was going through my head to begin with. Um, so I mean, I I mean, I don't think paying some sort of money to the town as reimbursement is too. Too much to ask, um, and it's all the same tax base, so I mean, if you're paying. Two hundred and fifty dollars in Middletown, you're sort of getting it back because you're, it's going back to Middletown taxpayers, so. Um, it's only, it's going from one pot to another, but it's all staying within the same towns.
That makes sense.
I would be in favor of raising the hundred dollars for the clerk to seven fifty and then doing two fifty to each town.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Have any opinion on that?
Yeah, I think the payment to the, to the two towns should be the same. I mean. Probably those workers in Wells are gonna be there all day and then they've got to drive over here and they're gonna stay till everything's done anyway. In a way, they should get more.
I just think that you're missing the point of the person, of the town hosting, but that's okay. I mean. Something is better than nothing and the town will be appreciative of being uh. You know, thanked basically for hosting an election. And I think that in some ways. There's the point of the the amount of responsibility a clerk has in running an election is. Is being overlooked. It's a huge responsibility. It's um also a lot of pressure in this day and age. And um, so I mean, that's where a lot of this comes from because it it is very difficult work. Especially now with the climate around elections and we, you know, we have. When we have to report to the state our results within. Half an hour of our polls closing, the the first. Initial results that are not official and then we have to. You first, you know, so we're, we're gonna be reporting three elections basically on. This March town meeting and it's it's, you know, it's a lot of responsibility, so I just want. That's part of that stipend because I don't do all of that. I can't do them one person. I need somebody to be the person who reports. While I'm helping, while I'm overseeing other things and um. So anyway, it's it's just, I think there's some. I don't think you understand the full picture is what I'm saying, but I'm I'm fine with whatever you decide. But I do think that the the town that is hosting takes on a lot more uh work and responsibility.
Well, okay, I hope you didn't misunderstand. Um, we're still proposing that Middletown Springs gets seven fifty. And we were just talking about the other workers be- besides um you. Getting the same amount for um the workers at Middletown Springs and the workers at Wells.
Well, yeah, I, okay, so the seven fifty would go directly to me. And then the stipend for the town would be. The stipend for the town, which is a lot smaller amount for an election, right? It's just to help pay for the. For the workers and take care of, you know, some of the extra burden that that the town is is. Uh, has because they're hosting the election.
Okay, yeah, no, I I understand all that, um.
Okay, it ends up being eighteen hours at fifteen sixty-eight an hour for two fifty. So it's being eighteen hours of a person, so if you split all the people. Eighteen hours at that rate seems fair if they're sharing some of that with the town.
Right, and I didn't think of it in that way at all, as as it was to cover people who were being paid. And to cover the buil- building expenses and other expenses that go into running an election, so. That's how I approached it in terms of coming up with those numbers and. You know, you guys can certainly massage that any way you want, but in my mind, it wasn't about specifically. So many people at so much money per hour. It was about the entire process and.
Okay, uh, thank you, Patty. Uh, okay, so final thoughts, uh. We would need, um, I think we'd probably need two motions, probably one to. To make changes to the stipend, right? And then one to, we would need one to appoint Patty as our district clerk as well. Yeah, because if we're. We're gonna um prove uh any any changes to the stipend in payment. That would be, that would be for this year.
So I I think, I don't know, I think technically, I mean, you can, because we're off cycle, I think you can probably do something. For this current year, but as far as the stipend permanently. That was decided at a town, at an annual meeting, and I think you could only change things that are decided at an annual meeting at another annual meeting. So I think that's something that would have to be on the agenda for your next annual meeting. Um, at the same time that Patty would get elected, you would change. Change the amount. I mean, you can, you can set an amount for this year because this is sort of she's, okay, but I mean, for going forward, I think to change. The actual stipend amount up for for every year going forward, it needs to be decided at an annual meeting.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I mean, we could talk about it for last thirty minutes, I.
I, I mean, you still need to decide what you're gonna pay her.
Yeah.
To for this coming election because we need to set that before the actual annual meeting. Um, and then at the annual meeting, it would just be the same, it would be the same vote as sort of a formality.
Okay, so would the the appointment then be tem- temporary just for this year?
It is temporary because that's an elected position.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Yeah, kind of filling.
And the hundred dollar stipend, just to clarify, so the hundred dollar stipend that's currently in place. Is not for the district clerk position, it's for the district clerk to attend our annual meeting.
Okay.
So there's currently no pay for the position um to hold that position.
That clarifies it.
Well, and then, and then the stipend, well, whatever we did call it is going to the town. Right in Middletown Springs.
Yeah, and I don't know that that we really need to, I don't think that needs to be something that's. Because that's just a reimbursement that you're, they can just bill you and you're paying. I don't think that needs to be something that you're um voting on at annual meeting.
Do we need to decide the amount though, so they can't just bill us any amount?
Yeah, I think you need to decide the amount and come to an agreement on that, um, but I don't, I don't think it needs to be something that you put into record at your annual meeting.
Okay, well, we'll follow more on that, so.
Let me, yeah, let me just then, now this starts to make a little bit more sense to me. I think that that would be the goal going forward is that it would go on the ballot at that. At that price for the, any future elections. But I respecting how the, how it's supposed to run, I wouldn't expect to get. Seven fifty for this baby mi- next election, even though. Right? Because the year, it depend, you know, where's the year start? Year starts after March third, it's now November. It it's, it's the whole. You know, you you guys can decide that maybe. I get the hundred dollars this year, but going forward after that, it goes on the ballot and it's done the way it's supposed to be done. And the price gets changed. But I think it's, I think that setting a pers- process that the town is also thanked. With some help to run their election, some monetary help would also be um. Appreciated for for this year, for this election.
Yeah, I think that that's what we're talking about, but we can, we can definitely.
Right, but you're saying that, you know, you could pay me whatever you want to pay me because it's off. I don't, I don't necessarily. Prescribed to that. I think that it should be the way it's supposed to be and then it gets changed at next town meeting if that's. If that's actually how it needs to be.
Oh, okay, I got you. All right.
It would be the following year when that would take effect.
Okay, and you're fine with that?
Yeah. I'm up for election this year too, so I may not even be the town clerk after March fifth.
Yeah, but you could, you could still be our district clerk.
I could be a district clerk, that would be a lot of fun then. You may be, you might be doing this again. Sorry, that was a joke, really. I hope it's a joke. I don't know.
It'd be easier for you if that was the case.
All right, so we, okay, so we need to uh, we need a motion to appoint Patty Kenyon as our district clerk.
I'll make that motion, all right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, motion carries and then, um, so obviously you'll have to. Um, actually, no, because we vote from the floor. So, um, we're not doing Australian ballot. So our moderator, clerk and treasurer voted from the floor, so. Um, I was gonna say. Something about uh getting on the ballot, but never mind. That was last couple years. Okay, so, um, all right, thank you very much, Patty, um, and. I think uh that's something that we'll we'll look into for our annual meeting to uh, you know, basically. Do it properly and have it in place for the following or for next year.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, just for listening and understanding. I think that sometimes, just as a point of closing. You know, lots of times elections are held in schools, so there is that working relationship. But here, that's not the case, so I think that, you know. It it's time to. Do, you know, do something that's more equitable and fair for the for the host town, that's all.
Okay. Makes sense and well noted, thank you. All right, uh, so we'll move on to uh our new business, Fastbridge Ball Assessment Update. Um, who's who's taking this? Is that Lisa?
I think it's Carol and I and Lisa.
I think it's Carol and I. And Lisa and Al are here to support and answer questions.
Okay, great.
Are we just kind of going by the the printout or I don't know if we're putting anything up?
I don't know, I could probably screen share. Oh, wait, I'm not I'm not even in the meeting. Yeah, I think I might give benefit of the, if you want to start talking and I can pull it up and share.
Sure, okay. Um, so we, Carol and I compiled um the fall data for both of our schools. We decided to do this jointly, just given all the conversations that we've had. Um, we just felt that this made sense to to look at this, the two schools together. Um, so FastBridge is a screener that we use. We used it last year in conjunction with MAP. This year, we have moved forward with just using FastBridge. Um, it combines computer adaptive testing, uh, meaning the kids are are answering questions and the the tests adjust based on how students answer those questions. Uses curriculum-based measures and observation-based assessments to screen students, identify skill gaps, and offer recommendations for instruction and intervention for students. Um, these assessments are given to GR, all GRCSU students in grades kindergarten through ninth grade. It's done three times a year in the fall, the winter and the spring. Um, and it gives us norm-referenced results, so it's comparing kids to their same-age peers across the nation. Um, and so this is a a lot of what we use to drive the work that we do with EST and looking at students who may need additional supports. So if you want to go, let's see, so we're gonna start with literacy data. Um, what we've done is we've outlined the different assessments that are taken um throughout uh kindergarten through um, here it says through 12th grade, but in our buildings through sixth grade. Um, with the exception of kindergarten through first grade, all students are taking two different assessments. Um, and these assessments vary depending on their grade level. So kindergarten and first grade students take an assessment called early reading. It's an assessment that's given one-on-one. Um, so teachers uh sit with each individual student and students are given five one-minute assessments, and the skills that these are assessing vary based on grade level as well as the time of year. So uh the assessments that kindergarten take uh kindergarten or takes in the fall will differ from what they take in the winter and the spring. Our second and third grade students are taking uh two assessments, one called CDM reading. Uh, this is also done one-on-one. Uh, students are given three different passages. They read those passages uh within one minute, and the teacher is looking at uh fluency and accuracy. Um, they are also taking a reading, which is the computer uh administered assessment that adjusts based on their answers. And then our fourth through sixth graders, uh, the first assessment that they're taking is auto reading, that is a computer-based assessment. Um, similar to CDM reading, that is looking at their accuracy and their um and their their rate of phonological uh orthographic and um semantic skills. And then they're also uh similar to our second and third graders, they're taking a reading, which is that um computer-administered adaptive test. So the first set of assessments that we're looking at is we are looking at um our kindergarten and first grade students and the early reading assessment, that assessment that's given one-on-one. Um, and so what you're seeing on this screen is we have all the way to the left, we have how kindergarten and first grade students throughout the SU scored. And then we have uh Middletown kindergarten and first grade students and Wells uh Village School kindergarten and first grade students. Um, what they've done is they've they've got the benchmark um there that's at at the uh the fortieth percentile and above. Um, and then students who are below the fortieth percentile uh have some or high risk. I'm not sure how in depth. If you have questions, please stop me. Um, so this slide is showing the CDM reading for students in second and third grade. Again, it's showing um the benchmark students at the forty-first percentile or above. Um, are at low risk or no risk. I I believe in FastBridge, they call it um college readiness. Um, and then students who are below the fortieth are at some or high risk. And again, we've got the districts, we have Middletown, and we have Wells. Uh, something to keep in mind with this data, uh, this CDM reading assessment is available to students for progress monitoring, so students who are being um being pulled by interventionist or who may be receiving intervention uh from their classroom teacher. This is a measure that teachers might use to look at their progress um on a weekly basis to see how intervention is working. Um, if we had students who are in like fourth, fifth or sixth grade who took this assessment out of grade level, so if you had a fourth, fifth or sixth grader who took a second or third grade leveled CDM reading during the um assessment window, it does impact the scores. So there there may be instances here, and Al can correct me. Um, but there may be instances where these percentages include students who are outside of the second and third grade band if they took the assessment in the assessment window. So the next is auto reading. This is given to our fourth, fifth and sixth graders. Um, so we have that benchmark of the fortieth percentile and above. Uh, those are students who are at low risk. Um, and then our students who are below the fortieth percentile are showing some or high risk. So that that lighter pink are the students who are at some risk. Um, and the students that high risk are that that darker pink. And then our final reading assessment that we look at is a reading. This is that computer adaptive test. Um, and so we have um the same benchmark, the forty-first percentile or above. And then the s- the students who are below, we're looking at um for additional services in the classroom or with the interventionist. Yes, before we move on to MAP, are there any questions about reading um or just about the assessment itself or how we're reading the scores?
Amanda?
Um, sorry, when you say district, you mean the whole GRCSU or?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should say supervised reunion. I apologize.
That's okay, thank you.
Meredith, did you have a question, too?
Oh.
Yeah, I I was just surprised that um we're seeing this broken down to the two schools. I thought our numbers were too small to be revealing that kind of information.
So our numbers are too small to reveal grade level. So what the what's recommended is if um if we have numbers of ten or lower, that we would not reveal that data. So all of this data um is is for uh class sizes or in this in this grade school sizes of of eleven or greater, which allows us to share it.
Wow.
Al.
Al.
Yeah, ju- just for clarification on that, for reference, last year when you were showing the MAP data, we showed it broken down to grade level, so we combined Middletown Springs and Wells together so we could show grade level data. This year, we're showing the two schools separately, but now we're combining all the grade levels together. So that's the difference, and I think that's what you're remembering.
Thank you. All right, um, so MAP, um, our kindergarten and first grade students, uh, similar to reading, they take an assessment called early math. This is done in a very similar manner, and the teacher polls students individually, and they are given five one-minute um assessments that that they complete um with the teacher. And again, the skills um are gonna vary based on grade level and time of year. And then our second through ninth grade um students are taking a math. And similar to a reading, that is going to be a computer adaptive assessment that's going to adjust based on how students are answering the questions. So we have, first, we have um early math for our kindergarten and first grade students, and our benchmarks are the same. We're looking at that forty-first percentile and above, and then below the fortieth percentile here. And then finally, we have a math for students in second through sixth grade um for Middletown and Wells with with that same benchmark, the forty-first percentile and above and below. So um Carol and I just put together just some some discussion points uh with conversations that we've had together, as well as conversations that we've had with our staff. Um, and we were maybe looking for some commonalities between the two schools. Um, so one of the discussions that we've had are around our math scores, um, that those are a little bit lower um in our individual schools than they are when we're looking at that SU data. Um, one of the action items that we have is the SU will be conducting a math audit with the All Learners Network. Um, there's been a lot of discussion uh here at Middletown about programming that's been used, a lot of inconsistency. Um, and really looking looking towards um finding some some consistency. Um, having that common language that's used from grade to grade can assess students with um with learning math skills. And then the other discussion um point that we had was really just looking at individual student scores uh that we are working with our interventionists as well as our EST and our teachers, looking at individual student scores and identifying students who are falling below the twentieth percentile. Uh, referring those students to EST, setting up universal intervention cycles within the classroom um by the classroom teacher or uh targeted intervention cycles, which often then include the interventionist. Um, looking at identifying individual needs of students and progress monitoring to see gains. Um, and then just we have monthly data meetings uh within each of our buildings and really using this data to um identify and plan for for classroom needs, so looking beyond just individual needs. Um, and then we've had discussion around the need for professional development uh around universal intervention above and beyond the core curriculum, just really the difference between those two things.
Amanda?
To be fair, this was the first time any of these students had seen this test style, correct?
No, so they took this assessment last year as well. We pi- this was piloted throughout the SU in grades K through six last year.
So so spring and fall or just fall?
It was done three times last year, so they took it in the the fall, the winter and the spring last year.
Okay, and this information is based on all of that combined, including this most recent or?
No, so this is just looking at the assessment. They took this past fall.
Okay.
Yeah, I and I believe if I remember correctly, this the pilot was to see if this was something that just that would you, the ESU would keep using, correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, we they they took this in conjunction with MAP. So this is the first year that we're really using this. No other assessment is being given. This is, this has been our focus.
Yes, so I would imagine that as we look at winter and and spring data, we would all see the comparison.
Yes, uh, you mean the comparison of of fall to winter?
Yeah, this this year, so.
Right, Al, we, that that is a report that we could run in the future, looking at comparing our kindergarten and first grade early reading in the fall to the early reading in the winter, correct?
Yeah, and that's really, that's what the growth report is all about. You take your fall baseline, you look at your winter scores. Essentially, they subtract the two, and whatever number you're left with is compared to the nationally-normed data, and you come up with the a percentile for growth. Uh, so that measures whether or not you're growing at or above the national average. And and that's the kind of data you'll see in the winter.
That's that's great, and I was gonna ask, but it's on the last page. So um, even though, you know, we're looking at uh, you know, both schools, which is fine because of the suppressed numbers and everything. Um, uh, do uh the schools look at the students in each class and?
Yes, so we we drill down more, um, so the teachers are looking at at their overall class as well as just individual students. And they had, they have access to additional reports to help them dig dig deeper.
And I kind of asked this at uh the ESU last night, but that these are, uh, this is gonna be student growth percentile, right? Uh, on all these, but on some pages it says low risk, higher risk, some risk. So as far as like color coding goes. Exactly. I I I think that was kind of like an error, but I just, I'm trying to you know, for future reference, we're gonna be looking at percentile in growth, right? Not high risk or or does that depend on the assessment?
I think it depends on what we're looking at and the purpose of why we're looking at it. I mean, I think that we're looking for growth, but I also think I I think we need to look at both there.
Okay.
You know, but I do think that, I mean, ultimately, we want to see growth in our students, but I think we also need to keep in mind where they are.
I mean, this this overall graph here, you're gonna see the next test next to this bar. And then the third one, you'll see all three, and how they compare.
I'm looking at Al, just because.
I'm assuming.
I'm not used to the reports quite as much in this manner.
Bottom where it says fall, winter.
Yeah.
Fall, winter, spring.
I would assume that we were we're gonna get
individually, you'll
all three across.
So what what we're looking at currently is it's the achievement, it's the equivalent of the MAP achievement scores. So it's simply a baseline measure of how students are currently performing. What you're gonna see in the winter will be a measurement of growth. So it'll be a slightly different looking chart. It will compare fall to winter and then give you a pers- a growth percentile. So in the winter, you'll see that, and then again in the spring, it'll be a similar type of deal where you look at your your fall score and you look at your spring score, compare the two and get a growth percentile number. So go, you know, going forward, you're gonna see growth percentiles. Currently, we're just seeing your baseline achievement percentile, so this is a straightforward achievement score right now.
Okay.
I hope that answers the question.
So so is, maybe I'm misunderstanding. So like, this then technically is not as easily comparable as MAPS, where MAPS would automatically give us a spring, fall, winter thing. This is then not comparing the same thing in the winter, because then it switches to growth. So there will not be two bars next to each other? Is that the right understanding?
No, MAP had the same sort of thing, where in this, in the fall, you would sit down, you would take a benchmark test, and you would get just simply an achievement score. If you had past, if you were looking at past data, you could sort of get a growth score from, say, spring last year to to fall this year, but you always have summer slide. There's no instruction going on in the summer. It doesn't really make sense to look at it that way. So in this case, similar to what we did with MAP, we're looking at a screening report, which gives you an achievement score. And then in the winter, you do the screening report again, and you get another achievement score. But you look at the difference between those two scores, hopefully you see growth. So you add points to your average score in the wintertime. And then you take that number of positive points that you've gained. And they they have a chart that they look at, but you, there's a lot of math behind it where you've you've done some national norming uh studies. And you say whether or not that growth is average growth or above average growth or below average growth, and a percentile ranking is assigned to that. But we did the same thing with MAP. Um, MAP had an achievement score and MAP had a growth percentile. FastBridge does the same thing. You can look at an achievement score and you can look at a growth percentile. It's similar kinds of data.
All right. Thank you, Al. Yeah, so I, I think as we, as we look at this, this information more and become more familiar with it. Well, technically, second time looking at FastBridge data from after last night and um, it, it's starting to make sense. Uh, any other questions? All right. Thank you for the presentation. Look forward to seeing uh the next uh couple of assessments. All right, so we're gonna move on to policy. Um, now let's see, we got uh it's like four for adoption. Uh, D four visitor volunteers and work-study students, F thirteen hazmat raising, hazing bullying prevention of students, uh the GRCSU equity policy and G nine responsible computer and network internet use. Um, is there a motion to adopt those four policies?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Um, and then the other are first reads. Um, any uh discussion on these? Um, any concerns or questions on these first reads? Uh, I will say, uh, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, that F eight was sent back to committee last night by the ESU board. Uh, other than that, um, there were some just uh formatting issues and some grammar issues throughout some of these policies.
Um, did a lot of work.
What's that?
It made a lot of changes since last night.
Oh, are, are you in the policy drive?
Yeah. No, thank you for doing.
Yeah, but I'll do it right away. Okay, yeah, I think uh, yeah, so if there's no objection to these, then uh, you know, we can warn, we can warn these. Warn them for adoption would be uh the next step. And that would be B four notice of non-discrimination, C one board meetings, agenda preparation and distribution, professional development and weapons and firearms. All right, I'll, I'll move it. Any discussion on these policies? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Okay, uh, so we do have an executive session, but before we do, uh, oh, we did have one person public here. Uh, but not anymore. Uh, our next meeting is December thirteenth, and so we will we will need a motion to move into executive session. Um, under one VSA three one three, evaluation of a public officer employee. Does someone wanna move this?
So moved.
Opened by Amanda. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. We're in executive session at eight fourteen and we'll excuse everyone except the board.